Good evening. Regular council meeting for the city of Coppers Cove held will be held on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five is called to order at six o'clock P. M. Please rise for the invocation by Ms. Harts taken by the pledge of allegiance. Of allegiance.
If you could, please bow with me in prayer. Father, we just want to thank you for this wonderful day, continue to work in our lives, Father, and just continue to watch over our family, friends, and neighbors, our first responders be with them, Father, as they take care of the residents in our community, and watch our decisions, Father God, over our decisions that we make as a city council. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the state flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey.
Here.
Christina Strophas.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Howard Hawke.
Here.
John Hale.
Here.
Del Tredway.
Here.
Fanya Hard.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
All right. I would like to take this opportunity personally welcome our newest member, Howard Hawke, the city council. Thank you for agreeing to serve and look forward to your your service to our city. All right, we will move with announcements. Ms. Strophas?
None from me, Mr. Mayor.
None from me, sir. Thank you.
Howard?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Ryan?
Yes, sir. I have several. So, November twentieth from five thirty to six thirty at the Cove Theater, and another option is November twenty-first from nine thirty to ten thirty A. M. at the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation. The Coppers Cove E. D. C. is hosting a downtown stakeholder roundtable to talk about downtown, the business climate, possible improvements that can occur in the town area. Also, on November twentieth from six to eight P. M. at the Coppers Cove Civic Center, the Noon Exchange Club is hosting the twenty-eighth annual Feast of Sharing event. It is a free event. It is a dine-in-only, no carryouts event. And then Friday, November twenty-first from four P. M. to seven thirty P. M. is Market with a Mission, and this will be out at Ogletree Gap Park. This is a food supply event. And then on November twenty-second from nine to eleven A. M. at City Park is the Fall Sweep hosted by Keep Coppers Cove Beautiful. December fourth from six to eight P. M. at Coppers Cove City Park is the inaugural Christmas in the Park event, a great time for family, friends out at the park. The pond is done. We'll have new queens out there. Come and enjoy. December fifth through December seventh down is the Kris Kendall Mart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I do have wreaths for vets. Let me get my friends of the Central Texas State Veterans Cemetery. Join them this second at ten A. M. for the wreath prep. Everyone is invited to the Colleen Special Event Center located at three three zero one South W. S. Young Drive in Colleen. On the following Saturday will be the wreath laying ceremony, Saturday, November twenty-ninth at ten A. M. And following that will be the wreath retrieval, which will be on Saturday, January tenth, twenty twenty-six, at ten A. M. And for more information, go to wreathsforvets.org. Thank you.
Jack?
No announcements.
All right. We move to item E, Citizens Forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section. Pursuant to section five five one point zero four two of the Texas Open Meetings Act, any deliberation or decision about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
All right. Is there anyone to speak during Citizens Forum?
George McMaster, eleven oh one Magnolia Avenue. To the honorable members of city council, I believe you ignored my voice and the voice of the community during the October twenty-first meeting when you enacted the, as I'm going to say it, illegal street maintenance fund. My email sent to you shortly after that meeting was a reflection of my anger. Admittedly, I am still feeling burned by that act. Since my pivotal moment, however, I've chosen to redirect my anger into some action. I've chosen to act in an equal and uniform manner without any exemptions in my actions against this program of yours. Before you talk to the city attorney in executive session tonight in agenda item kilo one, I shall pass on this missive to you. I've warned previously, in March, to be exact, that any exemptions not authorized under state law are illegal. I've warned that the business rate structure is inequitable equitable to the extent that it renders this structure to be illegal and unconstitutional per state law and court precedent. I've warned that as a result of its implementation, the street maintenance fund has somehow managed to legalize the senior citizen utility rate. Yes, I still remember that. All of this coupled with the knowledge that I learned yesterday that the school district would have faced a severe financial burden under the program without that sole lawful exemption condemns the entire program as one unlawful under subsection Bravo of section fifteen zero two point zero five seven Texas Government Code and unconstitutional per the Supreme Court rule Texas Supreme Court ruling in City of Texarkana v. Wiggins issued in nineteen fifty-two. If the city was to be taken to court on the sole basis of the illegal nonprofit exemption, it would lose the case the same as it would have been sued for the illegal senior citizen utility rate. Not only would the city lose, but the nonprofits would lose a lot more since they would be forced to suffer the severe financial harm you have illegally shielded them from. Your program will not survive a successful initiative petition if it comes to that. Your program will not survive a successful recall petition should it come to that. This program cannot survive in its current form considering the unconstitutional financial harm that will come to all of us and your unlawful attempts to shield certain end harm without extending that benefit in an equal and uniform manner. clarify, I am not here to force the nonprofits to pay into something that is illegal. I am not here to force the school district to pay into something that is illegal. Five thousand dollars a month was quoted by Dr. Hawkins yesterday, sixty thousand a year, coupled with two hundred forty-four thousand dollars, what, one hundred eighty-four thousand dollars a month a year they pay for their utility costs, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in total. I support this idea of a street maintenance fund only when it's done lawfully and equitably. I cannot accept by my actions what is undoubtedly an illegal and unconstitutional program, and neither should you. For the love of God, please heed what I have been saying to you about your street maintenance fund. If you indeed move forward with this program's current state, then I will keep fighting, and I will not stop until I see the end through. I may be just one person. However, if others take action outside of council chambers, then we will all pay for it and your lack because of your lack of action to correct something that is just plain wrong.
Anyone?
Yes.
Fred Chavez, seventeen oh five Joan Drive. This is a weird view. You guys look taller. I'm here to speak about the action item H. One. At a time when the state legislature is actually hostile to municipalities, school districts, and counties, I think going to the well again and asking our citizens, our taxpayers in this town, to subsidize a business so they can do their job is out of the box. To me, it's it sounds and it smells like corporate welfare. People are hurting. Everyone is hurting. And to go forward with this is to give help and aid to a business, which is great if we were all flush and nothing was bad was happening to anybody, but that's not the environment we have now. Right now, we're all hurting a little bit. I beg you, please vote this down. Thank you.
Daniel Hallbacher, six oh six North Seventeenth Street. Mayor, city council, city manager. I'm here to talk about annexation C. C. N.'s. First, let me say that we're in the first year of a five-year water rate hike. Prior to that, I think it was three years. So, you're looking at eight years of water hikes. I've been in this town a long time. I've never seen water rates that we had to raise them every year as we had the last few years and now the five more years. With that being said, these water rates were to help with infrastructure, aging infrastructure. Over the years, I've seen a lot of projects put on hold to help for development. The Valley of Great Hills is a perfect example. We had the city install two storage tanks over there and pump station. That's probably about four million dollars. That could have gone to aging infrastructure. Getting to the C. C. N.'s, I do not think the city should be paying for C. C. N.'s for development, especially when they're voluntary annexing into the city. That probably these water rate hikes are for improvements, not to pay for C. C. N.'s, and that's what we're going to end up being doing. I would like to know how much money we've spent over the last ten years on C. C. N.'s. I guarantee it's quite a bit of money. My other thing is, they talk about, well, we're going to bring in revenue. Yes, they do bring in revenue, but they bring in expense, too. One thing y'all forgot to talk about when the gentleman came in a few months ago was getting water rights. Right now, we spent about three years ago, we purchased more water, but we're still under T. C. E. Q. over eighty-six percent, I believe, and we're getting adjusted reform from them because we don't use as much water as, you know, we're allotted to. But every time you make a connection to this system, you're just increasing that eighty-six percent. We're going over it more and more. Why are we paying for that on top of doing the C. C. N.'s? And I don't like hearing, well, the city doesn't cooperate with the development. Like I said, we do a lot of infrastructure. That Mashburn addition, E. D. C.'s paying for them to run a water line across there to provide water for them at our expense. And the revenues we bring in are barely paying day-to-day operations. It is not going to cover, you know, major infrastructure. No way. You got to hire more police officers, fire department, you know, but that's what, you know, but as far as water, that's more electricity. We got when we run them pumps, that's a lot of electricity, and electricity's not cheap. And I know for a fact that other than personnel costs in the water department, electricity is the second biggest expense we have. So, I would like y'all, when y'all go to annex these properties in outside the city limit, I'm opposed to it if we're going to the city's going to be responsible for the C. C. N.'s. But again, I'd like to know how much money we have spent over the years for these C. C. N. rights. I guarantee it's quite a bit. Thank you.
Ray Payne, six oh four North Seventeenth Street, mayor, Ryan, council. Thank you for having me up here today. I'm trying to contain my my emotions because this is really upsetting to me, that the city would consider paying for the C. C. N.'s for this builder. First off, they're an out-of-town builder. I know that doesn't mean a whole lot, but to me it does. Second off, we've got this, the current tax base is going to be paying for the C. C. N.'s. The C. C. N.'s are a hundred and seventy-three to two hundred and seventy-nine dollars apiece for each one of those, and eventually there's going to be a thousand homes out there. And in my math, that's a hundred and seventy-three thousand to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Even if we pay half, that's still a lot of money, especially when we're talking to the citizens about us paying for road infrastructure repairs that we haven't been able to do in years because we can't afford it. Now, we're going to increase those cars in that area by two thousand cars if each one of those homes has two cars apiece, like like average does. Now, we're increasing the traffic on those roads, causing damage to those roads, and the revenue that we're going to get from that is going to pay for that outside of the fact that we're going to be paying for the C. N. C. C. N.'s, which if someone hasn't said it already, is a certificate of convenience and necessity for utility hookup. The builder should be paying for those. The citizens who are currently here should not be paying for those. That cost should be passed on to the new homeowner who is going to be paying a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, three thousand dollars for a new house, and they can't afford to 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 pass a hundred and seventy-three dollars to two hundred and seventy-nine dollars on to a new homeowner who is going to be able to have a thousand-dollar homeowner payment a month. So, thank you for listening to me. Vote no on the C. C. N. I'm fine with annexing. We need the revenue, but do not pay for the C. C. N. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum?
Melody Squires, two one two Roberts Town Road. This is an issue that was brought up several months ago about grass being tall. I know winter's coming, so maybe the grass won't grow that much, but thinking about next year. And some of the people were talking about grass in the backyard, how we weren't too concerned about that. But the backyard brings in snakes and other critters, and I know one of the things for animal control while we're doing, you know, the spade and neuter stuff, you know, trap neuter release was they could have. Well, that brings in some obits and other things in the yard that was abandoned before our neighbors with that, with the tall grass. So, that might be something to consider, you know, in our ordinance about backyards with the grass being really high with the different animals coming in there. Have to say about that to point that out. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum? All right, we will close that item E and move to item F, Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item one, consideration and action on approval of city council workshop meeting minutes for November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Lisa Wilson, city secretary. Item two, consideration and action on approval of city council regular meeting minutes for November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Lisa Wilson, city secretary. Item three, consideration and action on resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, excepting the quarterly investment report as presented for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, per the investment policy. Stephanie Potvin, Assistant Director of Finance. Item four, consideration and action on authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Lockwood Andrews and Newman, Inc., for the North Main Street Drainage Improvement Project. Scott Osborne, Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Works. And item five, consideration and action on authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Texas A. and M. Forest Service for the Establishment of the National Wildfire Coordinating Group, Wildland Firefighter Standard. Stephen Clendenon, Deputy Fire Chief.
All right, council, is there any of these consent agenda items you wish to pull and consider separately? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda F. One through five.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Hawke, signed by Ms. Hogan. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. So, we move to item G, Public Hearings in Action.
A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Item one, public hearing in action on ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven to categorize a future land use plan mapped by Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation for the Mashburn Drive Expansion Project, consisting of four tracts being sixty-six point two four two acres, to designate tracks one and two as retail and commercial land use, consisting of thirteen point eight zero nine acres, and to designate tracks three and four as industrial and manufacturing land use, consisting of fifty-two point four three three acres, located southwest of Old Coppers Cove Road and Mashburn Drive, Coppers Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
All right, the time is six twenty-one. We open up the public hearing for item G. One.
Mayor, council, on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, the city council approved the annexation of the Mashburn Drive Expansion Project. On October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the city council to categorize the future land use plan map, to designate tracks one and two as retail commercial land use, and to designate tracks three and four as industrial and manufacturing land use. The request by the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation is to categorize the future land use plan map for the Mashburn Drive Expansion Project. With that, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven as requested.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Any questions for Bobby, council? All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak on this public hearing, item G. One? All right, we will close the public hearing, G. One, at six twenty-two. Council, you have action to take?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tredway, signed by Mr. Hale. Discussion. All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. We move to item G. Two.
Public hearing in action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight to zone property by Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation for Mashburn for Mashburn Drive Expansion Project, consisting of four tracts being sixty-six point two four two acres, to zone tracks one and two as retail and commercial district, consisting of thirteen point eight zero nine acres. Track three is heavy industrial district, consisting of twenty-four point five four four acres, and track four is light industrial district, consisting of twenty-seven point eight eight nine acres, located southwest of Old Coppers Cove Road and Mashburn Drive, Coppers Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
All right, the time is six twenty-three. We open up public hearing for item G. Two.
Mayor, council, on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to city council to zone property by Coppers Cove Economic Development for the Mashburn Drive Expansion Project. This request by the Coppers Cove Economic Development Corporation is to zone tracks one and two, retail commercial district, tracks three as heavy industrial district, and track four as light industrial district. With that, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight as requested.
Council, you have any questions for Mr. Lewis? All right, anything from the public? Anybody wish to speak on this item G. Two? All right, the time is six twenty-four. We will close the public hearing. Is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight as requested.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hale, second by Ms. Hart. Discussion. All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. We move to item G. Three.
Public hearing in action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine to rezone property sponsored by the city of Coppers Cove to remove the P. C. Primary Corridor Overlay District for Lampassus County, parcel IDs six seven three nine, six seven five zero, six seven five two, eight seven nine three through eight seven nine five, eight eight zero four through eight eight zero seven, eight eight one one, eight nine four nine, eight nine five two, one zero six five three, one zero six five five, one zero six five six, one four six one zero, one four six one one, one four six one four through one four six one eight, one four six two zero, one four six two three, one four six four zero, one five three two zero, one five five zero seven, one seven five zero four, one seven five zero seven, one nine two nine six, two one two five five, two one four nine four, one five zero zero five zero, one five one nine eight nine, and one five five seven six six, located on both sides of U. S. Highway one ninety from West Business one ninety and F. M. Twenty-six fifty-seven to Big Divide Road, Coppers Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Easy for you to say. All right, the time is six twenty-six. We will open the public hearing for item G. Three.
Mayor, council, on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the city council to rezone property sponsored by the city of Coppers Cove to remove the P. C. Overlay District, located on both sides of U. S. Highway one ninety from West one ninety to F. M. Twenty-six fifty-seven to Big Divide Road. During discussions on May sixth, twenty twenty-five, the city council expressed concern that the P. C. Overlay District should only apply to those new potential businesses found along West and East Business one ninety corridor and remove the P. C. Overlay District that is affecting new potential businesses along both sides of U. S. Highway ninety corridor. With that, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine as requested.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Council, you have any questions for Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Lewis, can you please explain to everyone what the P. C. Primary Corridor Overlay means?
So, a P. C. Overlay District is sort of a special area that may have more things that for businesses to go in for, like enhance landscaping, for example, along the corridor. They may have some design standards. And so, the idea behind the corridor districts, both of them, was to improve the look of the city in the major commercial districts. This particular area is is not that developed. It has infrastructure issues, but the the Planning and Zoning Commission, along with the Zoning Ordinance Review Committee, felt this area had potential in the future, and so that's why this was chosen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in public wishing to speak on this item?
Scott Holden, Elgburn Properties, twenty twelve forty-eight West Highway one ninety. I am in favor to reason to remove the P. C. Overlay District for Lampassus County IDs. A couple of simple facts is that during twenty, from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine, that area is going to be all tore apart with the I. Fourteen expansion. So, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on there, you know, that's going to restrict whatever's going to be going on in that area at that time. So, I request that you may hold off on adding that corridor into that until, you know, you get I. Fourteen corridor. I think there's other things that you could use as far as if somebody's applying for a business that would put in there, you can restrict that by by either approving what they want to do or not until that time. But I think that that corridor right there should until the highway I. Fourteen expansion is done, I think that you should remove that from the P. C. Overlay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak during this public hearing? All right, the time is six twenty-nine. We will close public hearing, item G. Three. All right, the time is six twenty-nine. We will close public hearing, item G three. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I vote to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five thirty-nine.
I second.
Motion made by Ms. Hogan, signed by Mr. Hawke. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, sir. We move to item G four.
Public hearing in action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash forty to amend chapter seventeen point five subdivisions, Article Six, Design Standards for Lots and Blocks, Appendixes A through G, reserved, adopted by reference the Infrastructure Design and Construction Manual as revised in Chapter Four, Building Construction Related Activities, Article One, in general, Section four dash three, City specification as recommended by the subdivision technical advisory committee. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
All right, the time is six thirty-one. We'll open up public hearing, item G four.
Mayor Council, the SubTac held a series of meetings starting in February tenth, twenty twenty-five to amend chapter seventeen point five subdivisions incorporating changes to the Infrastructure Design Manual and to amend Chapter Four, Section four dash three. A total of ten meetings were held over a six-month period. On October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to city council to amend Chapter seventeen point five subdivisions, adopt by reference the Infrastructure Design Manual and to amend Chapter Four, Section four dash three, City specifications. A summary of existing changes is shown in strikeout with new language shown in underlying.
All right, counsel, questions for Mr. Lewis?
I want to give you our recommendation too.
I'm sorry?
I want to give the recommendation back to you, sorry.
You paused for such a long time.
Uh, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash forty as requested.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lewis? Right, is there anyone to speak on this public hearing, matter, item G four? All right, the time is six thirty-two. We'll close the public hearing. Is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve item G four, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash forty.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Hawke, signed by Ms. Hogan. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to action items, item H one.
Consideration and action on authorizes the city manager to enter into a development and annexation agreement between the City of Copper's Cove and WBW Single Development Group LLC, Series one forty-four and WB, and WBW Investment Solutions LLC, Series zero one one, known as Corial County Property IDs, one five six five nine three, one five four nine four four and one zero four six four nine, consisting of three hundred and ten point zero seven acres located along Lutheran Church Road and west of Summers Road in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Mayor Council, since city council workshop was held on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five and following city council directions, city staff and the developer have been working to refine the remaining final language of the development agreement. City staff has accepted all language changes to the draft development agreement and comply with all relevant exhibits within the attached agreement. This includes a development agreement summary that was submitted by the Assistant City Manager, Osborne. Upon final review of the compiled agreement, staff discovered there's an, an error in the total acreage in Exhibit B, the additional property. This issue will be resolved when the developers files the development application for the volunteer app, annexation, which will be required to be included in a current meet and balance description. City staff recommends that city council complete a final examination of the development agreement and consider authorizing city manager to execute the development and annexation agreement.
Mayor?
Yes.
Also, ba- based on the, uh, comments that we received during citizen forum, uh, very specifically addressing the CCN portion of this agreement, uh, you can see in the background, number eleven state, does state that, uh, in order for the developer to receive a fifty percent reimbursement for the cost of the purchase of that CCN, um, we would still have to prepare a Chapter three eighty agreement, which is basically a development incentive agreement. And it would be based on the number of certificate of occupancies or the completion of a house in order for somebody to actually move in to that house, uh, for that CEO to be issued, and then they would have to submit a, uh, request documenting, and we'd verify it before we made payment. So, um, a lot of the citizen comments that we received at the beginning of the meeting addressed CCN and, uh, wanted to make sure it was very clear to counsel what you directed. You directed fifty percent reimbursement for the cost of that CCN, what we negotiated with the developer, uh, in regards to making sure that we complied with counsel's directive on that.
Okay. All right, councils, there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have a statement I'd like to read first.
Sure.
Okay, just take me a couple of minutes, so bear with me. The City of Copper's Cove should not pay for the developers' water infrastructure and other service requirements, including the cost of CCN rights. If not, existing taxpayers and ratepayers subsidize the cost of new residential development rather than the new residential development paying for itself. This type of practice can lead to a range of negative consequences for the City of Copper's Cove's long-term financial health and equity, burden on existing residents. When a city covers the cost of a new infrastructure, the expenses pass on to all utility customers or taxpayers through increased rates or fees. This means that existing residents are essentially paying for the infrastructure needed to support growth they didn't request. Ensuring growth pays for itself. The principles of having the developers pay upfront costs or paying impact fees are designed to make new development financially offset the demands in place on public services and its buy-in for existing capacities and existing infrastructure. By requiring developers to pay for the water lines and connections, the city must ensure that the costs are proportional to the impact created by the new project being developed and constructed. Promoting responsible development, making development responsible for their utility impacts, encourage them to conduct a thorough due diligence and plan projects in areas where infrastructure is feasible and cost-effective rather than expecting public funds to cover expense extensions into undeveloped or rural areas where the land is cheaper for developers. And I'm almost done. Preventing corporate welfare. Public subsidies for private development are a form of corporate welfare where private companies benefit from public funds while they reap the profits. In most cases, standard practice and many municipal codes require developers to install the necessary infrastructure within development and pay associate impact or connection fees to cover external capacity needs. That's just my thoughts on it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to echo what Councilman, uh, Treadway said. I don't think at this time we are in position to accept a new development because that comes with a cost. You're talking about water fees, wastewater, solid waste and drainage. So right now, if we approve this item, the current customer at a fee, they're going to inherit that cost. So at this time, I don't think we are in a good position to take on any more development.
Anyone else? All right, there's-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on this. Uh, the CCN, the developer can't even buy it from Kemptner Water Supply. The City of Copper's Cove has to buy it, so I'm looking at it as the developer is reimbursing us fifty percent of the cost of the CCN. So I'm looking at it the other way. And if we don't have more residents and more taxpayers to help the city, every one of them are going to be paying taxes, water bills, uh, sewer bills, solid waste and every other fee that we charge. Uh, and that helps the infrastructure that is old and deteriorating downtown. The money that, that bring, that the new residential growth brings in and the new, uh, Copper's Cove residents helps support the, the entire city as a whole. The, uh, police need raises every year. The city manager deserves a raise every year. And if we don't have that spread out over a larger area than, than the people that are here are just going to pay more every year. Trust me, we need the growth. And this is a great development that's been worked on for years between the city staff and, uh, WBW Development. They have, they have brought several great subdivisions to town. And, uh, a lot of new residents are moving here because of it. I am not one that says, I'm already here, let's lock the door and not let anybody else in.
All right, there's a number of parameters to this particular agreement and, uh, because of some of the specifics of it, I think we need to adjourn into executive session to discuss with our city attorney to see uh, if there's certain parts that can be left in, left out, how we need to proceed on that. So with that, the time is six forty-one. We will adjourn into executive session to discuss with city attorney. The time is six fifty-four. We reconvene into open session for any possible action resulting from, uh, item posted or legally discussed in executive session. We move forward. Counsel?
Mayor?
Yes.
So just, I guess just to recap, what we were talking about earlier was, um, the CCN provisions within the agreement. Uh, there's been some discussion and dialogue that, uh, the council, uh, some council members are considering that we should not be, uh, as a city reimbursing the developer for the cost of that CCN. Uh, obviously some additional dialogue, uh, that the, uh, city, uh, should be providing a reimbursement to the CCN. Um, and the language within the drafted agreement is at council's previous direction. That direction is, uh, sets a, uh, cap on the amount that would be reimbursed to the developer. What's that amount, Bobby? Hundred and forty-nine thousand. In what? At twenty dollars? One, one eighty, okay.
One forty-nine, one eighty.
Thank you.
Uh, my microphone was not, sorry.
No worries. And then, um, and then the reimbursement is based on, uh, certificates of occupancy being issued for completed properties. And again, we still have to develop the three eighty agreement, but it'd be based on the provisions within this agreement. Um, and the amount within this development agreement sets that reimbursement at four, four hundred and eighty dollars per CEO. Which means the development does not have to be fully built out in order for the developer to receive full reimbursement by the end. Because there needs to be some reasonable time period in which that CCN would be recouped, or the cost of that CCN would be recouped. So, again, trying to set the stage for either council's continued discussion on this or, uh, action, uh, that's what is in the drafted agreement. Anything else you want to add on that, Bobby?
I see.
Okay, thank you.
And you did say that the full amounts paid by the developer upfront and then reimbursed as a CEO is issued?
Yes, the agreement does require that the developer, uh, pay for the full cost of the CCN uh, transfer plus the filing cost and, uh, the, the reimbursement, uh, would be for, uh, that purchase cost.
And so the hundred and forty-nine thousand is, hundred and forty-nine thousand, one eighty is the cap that would, that's being reimbursed. And that's spread over the development costs, which is, and, and this, in several phases is thirteen hundred homes, something like that?
Should, yes, and it'd be over the life of the development as well.
Over the life of the development.
Yeah, every CEO then would cut a check for four hundred and eighty dollars.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to point out that the developers have agreed to do some pocket parks in their, Bobby, is that correct?
That's right.
And they're going to do a traffic impact analysis that, that starts all the way over at, uh, First Street, one sixteen. And they've agreed to take a look at the impact of the traffic and, and that would be looked at, at, uh, before the final plat approval, correct, Bobby?
Yes, and also they've, uh, dedication of future arterial right-of-way through their, to match up with the transportation mash plant.
Uh, so that's all stuff that the city staff, uh, Bobby and the city staff have negotiated throughout the last four years of this, four to five years. And, and, you know, we, we put the final touches on it at a council meeting. When was that council meeting? Council workshop where we-
The council workshop was in August, yeah.
In August, yes.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to authorize the city manager to execute the development and annexation agreement between the City of Copper's Cove and WBW Single Development Group LLC, Series one forty-four and WBW Investment Solutions LLC, Series one.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, signed by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Roll call.
Christina Strophas?
Nay.
Rita Hogan?
Nay.
Howard Hawke?
Nay.
John Hale?
Aye.
Dale Treadway?
Nay.
Bonja Hart?
Nay.
Jack Smith?
Aye.
Five two.
Five two, the motion fails. All right, thank you, Bobby. We move to item H two.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, before we leave that item, is there any direction that counsel wants to provide on that? Or, or is, is counsel done with this potential development?
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't mind this coming back and we, we look at it, but I'm still going to stand firm on the water. So let me make sure that I'm understanding what I'm hearing. The people that, and this is just my assumption at this point, the people that voted no are doing this over a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars over five to ten years. I have other issues too, but my biggest one's the water.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Oh, we have to do what's best for the, the city. And we are setting the precedent here. And we started now, later on down the road, in the future, we have to do it again.
Anybody else?
Mayor, is there any direction from the council?
I think, if, go ahead.
I would certainly like you to come back. I, I would hate to lose, uh, thirteen hundred new families that would have an opportunity to move to Copper's Cove. I don't want to be that selfish and not share our great city with the potential of thirteen hundred new families moving here.
I can support that.
So, re-look at it. Re-look at the, the agreement in its entirety. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, for the, the direction. I, I guess I need some more specifics as to what direction you want us to look at, what specifics in the agreement you want us to look at. You have previously provided us direction, we followed that direction. And so, if, I've heard that there's a concern with water, clearly, the, the certificates of convenance and necessity provision within the agreement is of the greatest concern to the council based on the dialogue that we've had so far. So, is there a percentage you want us to look at? Is there just a direction that you want us to negotiate that the developer pays for all of it, or that the city pays for 10% of it? Go back to what the council has previously given us direction on, which was to pay for a portion of that CCM transfer. I, I'm just looking for some clarity. Mr. Osborne, did you want to add?
I, I was gonna ask for that exact same direction. Obviously, we have made it quite a long ways over the last five years in an attempt to shape a very beneficial-looking development. Obviously, there's give and take in every agreement. At the end of the day, I would prefer not to scrap that effort, but if there are specific provisions, we can, we as staff can hone in on with the developer that would satisfy city council's desires, a majority of city. I would appreciate receiving that direction tonight, and we can, we can keep this moving.
Counsel, is, is, is it your directive that you want to consider the CCM specifically? Everything else, was there anything else in the agreement that did not meet everybody's approval?
Mr. Mayor, I still have issues with the road study, okay? I wish we could have that done upfront for, we really do anything, so we can actually see what the real impact is gonna be out there. I know Scott and Bobby and the rest of city staff and city managers sit down with the developer, and they've worked out some of these issues. But I'm still iffy what the final product or what that report's gonna say. I'm trying to look in the future for the growth, not just a subdivision, but that entire area, because eventually it will blow up. My biggest concern, I, I just think they should pay for the CCNs.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. I'm sorry.
I would like to state that when I met with the developer, their plan and design for the development was beautiful. But I fully support the city at that time and still do currently to hold the developer responsible for paying what they should pay in the process. But not at a, a loss of a wonderful development, a future community, more families, more taxpayers to this area. So, I do want to see this plan move forward. I do not want it to fall, you know, further behind than what it already is.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I would like to go back and revisit the CCM, that's my bigger concern. As a new council member, I just need to get a little more educational on the CCM. So, instead of losing this whole development, I'd like to go back and get more educational on the CCM.
Anybody else? Is that direction enough?
Mayor. I'm gonna say no. And council was very specific previously. He said a 50% reimbursement to the developer. So, would you like us to go at a lower percentage? Let's, I guess let's start there. Overall, is there consensus by the council that we should be a lower percentage of reimbursement?
I personally just don't think the city should be paying for it, the developer should be.
Okay, we'll, we'll do it this way, lower than 50%, but higher than zero. So, I think it's at zero.
I'm, I'm okay with 50%, but you said lower than 50%.
Oh.
I, I think, you know.
Lower than or equal to 50%?
We need more chicken eaters to move here to Copper's Cove.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
I just can't. I love that.
Are we good? Do we understand? Right now, we're at zero. The consensus is zero, if I'm, if I'm understanding what everybody's saying. Yes, yes. Howard?
Yes. I'm good, we're right.
Okay. Dale's at zero, his heart's at zero.
I'm at zero.
And Jack is at 50%, because we need more chicken eaters.
Okay, so, with the understanding, the only change that city council is directing at this point is to reduce the reimbursement for the CCM to 0%. That will become a counterproposal that we will have to discuss with WBW to see whether or not they, they would still like, like to move forward. We do have representatives in the audience of WBW, if you would like to recognize them to receive their input or not. City staff can move forward and have that discussion with the developer and then bring this back at a subsequent date with the results of that, that discussion.
Would representatives for WBW like to comment at this time or direct staff to? Okay. All right. We good, right?
Thank you for the direction, counsel.
Thank you.
Went like this, okay. All right, thank you, Scott. All right, we move on to item H two.
Mayor, before Mrs. Wilson reads that, we've requested that we pull this item.
Oh, okay. We pull item H two, we move to item H three.
Consideration and action on authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with TIP Strategies to develop a strategic marketing and communications plan. Ryan Havelaw, city manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and counsel, you previously provided direction. Well, first, you received a presentation on a strategic marketing and communication plan from TIP Strategies. And just as a reminder, TIP Strategies is the consultant that the Economic Development Corporation used to develop their strategic plan. A very robust plan, and during that time, as we went through that discussion, council provided direction that we should work with them to develop a marketing and communication plan. And so, we received that proposal. City council provided direction in May to move forward with that. It was included in the adopted budget for this fiscal year, which began October 1st. City budget includes half of the cost for this. The Economic Development Corporation also budgeted half of the cost for this. So, with council's action to approve this, we would execute the agreement and begin the process of the strategic marketing and communication plan. We would actually do a kickoff meeting in January because we're upon the holiday time period. And want to make sure that all the stakeholders are available for the discussions and dialogues on this. So, with, with that being said, staff's recommendation is approval of authorizing me to sign the attached agreement.
Counsel, any questions for Ryan? Is there action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item H three.
Do we need to read that? Or just?
I read the item already, sir.
I'm sorry?
The item H three, I read it, I did read it.
Okay, but he approved it H three instead of the actual item. Okay, we're good. Got city attorney approval, I like that. Mr. Hawk made the motion, Ms. Hogan seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. There are no reports from staff outside entities, advisory committees, and boards. We move to item J, items for future agendas.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing for me, sir.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing, sir, thank you.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing.
Okay. Item K, executive session.
Item one, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to chapter 551.071 of the Texas Government Code regarding street maintenance utility fees. Item two, discussion of personnel matters pursuant to chapter 551.074 of the Texas Government Code regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a, of a public officer or employee. City manager, Ryan Havelaw. Item three, discussion of personnel matters pursuant to chapter 551.074 of the Texas Government Code regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. City Attorney, Denton Navarro Rodriguez, Bernal Santian Zec, PC.
All right, the time is 7:13, we adjourn into executive session. The time is 7:39, we reconvene into open session for any action resulting from any item posted and legally discussed in executive session. There is no action to be taken, so at 7:39, we stand adjourned.